Supervisor for this meeting?
Support.
President, what's?
President and Chair of the Board for the evening.
And you support?
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will make a motion that the clerk role tonight be played by Kate Borninski.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and if we could please have roll call of the Board of Trustees.
Let the record reflect that Trustee Borninski is present, Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee, or Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And can we please have roll call of the Planning Commission?
Nancy, do you want to call?
Would you want me to do it?
Sure.
I'm, yeah. I'm reading up there. I'm sitting in for Alan. I'm not normally do this, although that really wouldn't change my skill level. Okay, Trustee Cruz. Trustee Eckenberger, yes. Trustee Foster.
I'm still here, good evening.
Awesome.
Trustee Janowski, I don't know why I have to wait.
Here.
Trustee O'Conne. Trustee Singh. Trustee Watkins.
Here.
There we go. Trustee Weber.
Present.
And Chairwoman Zuber.
Here.
Your nameplate is one seat over.
You could just switch the nameplates.
Just move the nameplate.
Tom, do you want to move down? And can I have an adoption of the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda listed.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, well, we have a study session. We have, we'll start, we'll have Patrick Sloan and Municipal Services help us out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Slavens, or Chairperson Slavens, tonight. For some of the members who don't know, I'm Dave Norwood. I'm the interim Director of Municipal Services Division. And I'm going to turn this over to Patrick, as many of you know, as the community planner, who's going to walk us through the various items that we are going to cover tonight. Lot of information, and certainly as we have questions, we'll move forward and hope to get us on the same page as we move forward with these two items. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start by, so I go in order here. So the first item in the agenda is the electric vehicle charging infrastructure draft ordinance. And we don't have a presentation prepared for this. We have one prepared for science, but for the EV charging infrastructure ordinance, we've got the ordinance that we can put up on the screen and scroll through, look through different sections, as well as the transmittal memo that we included. And the purpose of these standards that are in the draft ordinance is that the township has seen an increase in demand for commercial and industrial sites to install EV charging stations on their sites as accessory to their onsite use. And currently in the zoning ordinance, there are no standards that explicitly address EV charging stations. So the ones that we've received so far in terms of the applications, we use the default standards of those ordinance for setbacks, transformer equipment screening, interpreting these structures as accessory structures, and being able to approve them by default under the existing standards of the ordinance, which work in many applications, but they don't specifically address standards that are going to be very specific to EV chargers. So what we've done is we've done a study in terms of other communities in Michigan and nationwide that have EV charging station standards. And we've looked at model ordinances, and we've drafted the ordinance before you this evening based on a number of things. First is looking at model ordinances that address newer technology, as well as those ordinances that have been around for several years and have stood the test of time. We first discussed EV charging standards at the February 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. And at that meeting, we looked at some draft standards. The Planning Commission held a discussion about some questions about what they wanted to seize, about ordinances in general. So we had taken some time since then to look through different standards, do a little bit more studying on what we're seeing out there and what the industry is doing. And we came back at the September 18 Planning Commission meeting and the October 16 Planning Commission meeting with revised ordinance. And there were some amendments or revisions at the September 18 meeting that we made to the draft and looked at the October 16 meeting. So at the October 16 meeting, the draft was in relatively final form, but before we want to go ahead with setting a public hearing with the Planning Commission, we wanted to take the opportunity to have a joint meeting, share it with the Board of Trustees, and talk about any major policy-related matters in the draft ordinance, or if there's anything in much more detail we want to go to the ordinance, we can do that at this point. Going forward, once the draft has been reviewed, the next step after this evening is that if the Planning Commission has any modifications to the draft ordinance, those modifications can be made, and then the Planning Commission can set a public hearing and then make a formal recommendation on the ordinance before it goes to the Board of Trustees for a vote. So this is an ideal time before we get into the public hearing process to get comments from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees on the draft ordinance. So the next thing I'll jump into is the ordinance summary itself. So I'll just go section by section in terms of rolling out how the ordinance will read. The first is the zoning ordinance article location. We're proposing to locate this in the off-street parking and loading article of the zoning ordinance, which is Article 4. Because the EV charging stations are related to parking and vice versa, the parking article is a natural fit to put these standards in. The next section that we have is definitions.
Sorry, do you want us to stop you as we go for questions, or wait?
Yeah, jump in any time.
Okay, I don't have a question now, but I just wanted to know.
Oh.
That was a question.
I guess it was.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that before. If there's any comments or questions, feel free to stop me at any time as I go through, and then I can bring up the ordinance on the screen and scroll to that particular section. So the next, actually, it may be easier if I upload my memo on the screen, and that way I can kind of go through it that way. So the next section is definitions, and most of them are pretty standard definitions, and they're related just to EV charging. We have a section in the ordinance, at the very beginning of the ordinance, for general definitions throughout the ordinance, but where there's a unique type of use or set of standards, we include definitions embedded in that particular section. So these definitions in this section are unique just to EV charging and not related to anything else. And then, now after we get into the location and the definitions, now we get into the permitted locations, and we really get into regulations. And so for permitted locations, our recommendation is to allow all EV chargers to be permitted as accessory uses in any zoning district. So by accessory use, if there's a permitted use on the site, a retail building, an industrial building, restaurant, service provider, then EV charging stations are permitted by right as accessory uses in that district. However, Level 3 chargers will always be subject to Planning Division review due to the mechanical equipment and site changes that are involved. So if someone wanted to do a Level 2 EV charger, it's relatively minor equipment, and a lot of times they can just go to the Building Division and get a permit. With Level 3 chargers, there's a lot more equipment involved, and it may involve removing parking spaces, it may involve heavier equipment that either needs to be screened, or the location needs to be considered in terms of how it relates to the site and the view from the public right of way, the adjacent properties. So for Level 3 chargers, that's something that we want a little bit higher level of review for the Planning Division to look at.
Patrick, I'm not sure if this would be a scenario, but would we ever do street-side parking chargers, maybe in Cherry Hill Village? I'm not sure if I can think of any other places, and would that be covered by this section, permitted locations?
That's a good question. A lot of cities have them, where they have street-side EV chargers. And it's definitely something that, if it's not addressed in some fashion in the ordinance that we can write into it, that if it's a permitted on-street space, that it would be permitted by right. I think the intent is it would. We'll go through the ordinance to make sure it's not subject to any setbacks or location requirements, because the equipment would technically be in a public road right of way, so as long as the road agency was okay with it, and otherwise met the standards, we can write into it there.
Through the chair too, Patrick, just, I want to be sure also that we are, if there's an opportunity to, like, future-proof the requirements that will be baked therein, right? Right now, we have Level 1, we have Level 2, we have Level 3 chargers, God knows what we'll have, three, four, five, six, seven years from now, if there's an opportunity to craft language that we can utilize that makes the ordinance, if you will, future-proof. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's another good question, because in our definition section, I'll just scroll over to it, and where we get into the definition of charging levels. Level 3, it's defined as considered fast or rapid charging with more than 240 volts. So if there's something that's a Level 4, Level 5, that's an even greater amount of voltage, and there's larger equipment, at some point, if we don't amend the ordinance, it's just going to be considered a Level 3. But we may have cause to amend the ordinance in the future to say, well, that's a Level 4 and 5, because either it's more equipment or some other circumstance that the ordinance doesn't cover.
Or different ways.
Right. Yeah, so if there's different ways of charging, like in Detroit, where they have the street where they're designing it to charge right up the street. And then, the next part of the permitted locations, we discussed a little bit about, we discussed a little bit about the EV charging stations being accessory uses. And what we've included here is any proposal for EV charging stations to be a principal permitted use is subject to special land use review in certain zoning districts. And the ones that we put in the draft ordinance are some of the commercial districts and industrial districts. We can add more, we can add central business district overlay, we can add corporate park overlay, which are along Fort Road but on opposite sides of 275. The purpose of having those standards there is just to start the process of thinking about, there may be sites in the future where they dedicate the principal use of the site to just EV charging, and there's no other onsite use, there's no restaurant, no retail, it's just a parking lot with a bank of likely Level 3 EV chargers. So, and that's listed for now as a special land use, and mostly because special land uses have a higher level of review. And depending on what the circumstances may be, there may be sites that are excellent fits for EV stations as a principal use, and other sites that may not be a fit. So the next section is the general requirements, and these are, it's a large section, but it's summarized here as just the provisions included for permitting, design, parking, accessible spaces, lighting, screening, signage, maintenance, including maintenance in accordance with fire code and electrical codes. So as fire codes and building and electrical codes change and evolve, especially in the light of new technology, we want to make sure that the ordinance covers that by reference. And also, it covers usage fees. There's nothing in the ordinance that requires free parking or requires a fee, that's more of a private transaction between who's getting the electricity and who's selling it. The second to last section is required EV installations. And this is probably the most impactful section in terms of, not just this ordinance, but a lot of communities' ordinance, in terms of, they have standards for EV charging stations, and a lot of them read the same in terms of the ones before, like definitions and maintenance and compliance with different codes. And then this, second to last section, the required EV installations, this one deals with types of land uses and developments where EV charging installations are required to be installed. And the requirements in the draft depend on the type of land use, the size of the development, or the size of the parking lot, and whether the EV installation is either an EV capable, an EV ready, or an EV installed. And those are three types of installations, where on one end of the spectrum, an EV capable is just that there's panel capacity and there's conduit, but there's no wires, there's no electrical installations. And then all the way over to an EV installed as a full EV charging station, where it's connected to the panel, there's an operating charger. So the major item for further discussion is the proposed requirement for one EV capable space per revolving unit with a garage. And that's one example of several others that we have in the ordinance itself. So at this point, I know it was the second to last section, but what I want to do is, I'll scroll to that table right now, just to have it up on the screen. And so the table that's up on the screen would basically be the summary, and it would apply to, it would apply to new developments, new buildings, new parking lots, or when an existing parking lot is expanded or reconstructed, or when a building is increased by 25% or 3,000 square feet. So it's either new construction, new parking, or certain changes to parking lots or buildings that would precipitate the installation of EV charging. So this table, it's a similar format that a lot of ordinances have, but every ordinance is different. I don't think any two are alike in terms of the required installations based on land use and the chargers. Some ordinances require a lot more for parking lots, some make it more of an option. So at this point, I'll stop at this point, see if there's any questions or comments about the format of the tables.
Can I ask a general question? Has the Fire Department looked over the draft ordinance yet?
I don't think they've looked at it yet. We have periodic meetings with them, so we can have them take a look through the ordinance.
Okay, because I would, not being an expert on this by any means, but I would want, before okaying Level 3 EV charging stations for residential use, I would want to be sure they're okay with this.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
And then the last section, I'll scroll down to it. Is, in the different sections of the zoning ordinance for zoning districts, we added the principal use as a special land use. So for example, in the C3 regional commercial district, under special land uses, we added the phrase of retail electric vehicle charging station as a principal use, and then we reference the standards in the ordinance that apply to them. So if someone has vacant property in any of the districts that are listed for special land use, and they want to, and they want to use that, then they would have to apply for a special land use permit and file a plan. And then, going back to the Level 3s in residential areas, I'll have to look again at the ordinance, but I think we had something in there that prohibited the Level 3s in certain single-family districts. And that would kind of maybe discourage the retail sale of electricity. If someone installed one at their home, it might encourage them to sell it to the neighbors.
So I actually was curious about that part. But going back to multifamily residential, just want to make sure that that is not something that the Fire Department would be concerned about.
So at the same time, I was concerned. You have to talk close to the mic. I was concerned with the same thing with, I don't know how multifamily works, but I don't think that government has a place, if someone's building a single family, they don't want to say, hey, you've got to put this charger in and this conduit in. I don't think it belongs there. You know, if it's for the public good or overall good, it's a parking lot or something of a larger scale. But maybe building a house, you know, does it do good for me?
I'm actually fine with that part. I am concerned about Level 3 charging in residential as a safety issue.
We'll talk to the Fire Department and the Building Division as well, because electrical code.
I was curious about why the, and I'm not necessarily against it, but why prohibiting the sale of, allowing someone to use your home charger at a cost?
I think part of that is a little bit of the unknown. If someone were to install a Level 3 on a single-family residence, and if people in the neighborhood knew that they could park in someone's driveway to charge their car, it's something that we haven't really explored. Not necessarily that we would be against it, thinking it through, it's just some of the unknown impacts and outcomes.
It might be sort of like a home occupation issue, which we permit, right? I mean, to some degree.
Yeah, we all have occupations.
Yeah.
I actually have a question about, let's see, it's page 2 of the zoning ordinance draft, at the bottom of the page, under general requirements, and then design requirements. Yeah, down there, the, under equipment protection there, is that a requirement also for residential use, like in your garage? A equipment protection there, at the very bottom of page 2 there, Patrick?
Yeah, I think we'll want to clarify that, that that wouldn't be for the single-family homeowner. That would just be for non-single-family residents.
Not only do you have to put in this charger, but you have to put in ballards. People love it.
And then going back, looking again at our Level 3, I want to take back what I said. I don't think we have a prohibition of Level 3 in residential districts. I think in one of the earlier drafts we did, but in this draft, we don't. So I think Level 3 is just a permitted installation, but the commercial sale of electricity rules apply for the zoning district.
So we have an electric charger in our garage. So I'm looking at all these thinking, I have no idea how much electricity is used, except that it's gone up. My husband convinced, is assuring me that he's spending less on gas, so it's equal, but I'm not convinced yet. But I would assume ours is like a Level 1, so I have no idea how it would ever charge anybody for what it is, I have no idea what it is. So unless it's a Level 3, which feels a little bit higher than anybody would need in their garage, because you can charge it overnight.
Or a Level 2.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I, I'm not sure that that's going to be an issue. I understand trying to cover all possibilities, but...
So I'll play devil's advocate here. We also have a charger in our garage, which is why I was asking about the ballards, but I have an app, and I can tell how much electricity is being used by the charger, and approximately the cost. And also, if you have the ChargePoint app, you can look and see where chargers are in your neighborhood. So my charger shows up on a map. Now, I'm not saying I want to have people come into my house, strangers that I don't know, who want to charge, because I don't. But I think, I definitely think it's something that we need to think about, so I'm glad we're thinking about it. I'm not sure how I feel about it.
To that point, it's really not unlike if you have a relative or a friend come over and they need to charge their phone. Are you going to charge them to charge your phone in your house? No, but they might need juice for their car to get home or whatever, so I mean, you're not going to charge them.
But if someone comes to your house and they want to charge their phone, you're not going to charge them for the electricity, right?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What is the conversation? Isn't the conversation more if Kate put hers on the app, which I would feel like there'd be some way to tell them to take that off? I wouldn't want people knowing you had a charger. But if you decided you wanted to go into a little extra business doing it, that feels like that's more what the conversation is. But then, wouldn't it be regulated as some sort of business? Ours is just on the side, a little cash under the table, I suppose.
Yeah, it may be something where, if it's more word of mouth, and it's a little more underground, and it doesn't have the appearance of, you know, cars constantly coming in and out, then it might be like, you know, some home occupation.
Just what are they selling at that house?
Some home occupation.
It's not opioids anymore, it's black market EVs.
Oh, boy.
That's the name of my next band.
Right, I don't know.
I'm not sure anything that was so would rise to the level of being noticed.
Right. So I'm just not sure we need to put something in there about it or spend a lot of time.
I think it's something that we should be aware of, because it, you know, like I said, that exists right now. We don't know what might exist in the future, as far as, you know.
Is there a reason somebody could though? I mean, if you chose to sell your electricity? There's no law against it, right?
It's regulated.
It's regulated?
Yeah.
Through the chair, to Patrick. Our utilities are regulated. We can't sell our electricity or gas, because what we'd like to, I think, charging is a little bit different than selling the actual energy. It's going to be, it's two different things, and I'm not sure if, in the scope of what we're talking about, that either of which are things that fall under our purview, be it either the sale of energy, or charging, or a business that allows you to do so, or any of those things. I think the focus is primarily going to be on, like, how do we ensure we've got these things, we've got them regulated properly, and our ordinance is fit, how we're going to utilize them in both business, residential, and in the community? So to that question, I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can.
I think, though, you're right, though, when you always talk about future.
Future-proof.
I mean, who thought somebody would just drive around, pick people up, and drive them where they wanted to go? And I didn't. And you got into a stranger's car, I was taught not to do that.
That's right.
But, so, who knows?
Okay, so that was it for the ordinance. Some of the next steps will be, we'll look through the ordinance, we'll address a lot of the comments here. When it goes back to the Planning Commission, we'll talk to the Building Division, the Fire Department about Level 3s, especially in residential, as well as some of the other items noted. Along the way, it'll be at least a month or two, I think, before it would be ready for a public hearing. So any comments, questions along the way, something comes up after tonight's meeting, or future draft of the ordinance, feel free to reach out to us anytime. We can answer questions, take comments, take them back to the planning commission or the board, depending where the ordinance is in the process. Everybody ready to talk about signs?
Would you mind, I know this is unusual, but we do have a couple uh a public question. I know it's unusual during your study session, but because this is so new, would it be okay if uh if we had a. Say, if you want to go to the back end, please, just a question.
Hi, I'm David Coslin, I was just going to explain to you about a real brief overlay about phase limiting. I don't know if anybody knows about phase limiting with EV charging. So really quick, let me explain to you, so a regular voltage in our building is a hundred ten volts like in our house, that's single phase. We could put level two, which is called two forty single phase. Now, to get the necessary power to drive a level three charger, you need either two forty three phase or four eighty three phase. DTE does not allow anything to exceed single phase in a residential home.
So no issue.
So you if you were to say, hey, I want to put a level three charger in my house, couldn't do it because you can't get three phase power. Because of the liability of three phase power. If you ever see a tall in a building, the the meter bank, it's very tall, it's very big, even in a multiple structure, it's very rare. The only time you can get three phase power in a multiple would be for the HVAC equipment. Now, potentially you could use that for an EV charger in a multiple building, say an apartment building, for an elevator, elevators run three phase. So all this worry about a residential home, it just should be limited by phase. That would be part of the criteria to say, look, not to exceed single phase. Which they're not going to give you sing, you know, you're not going to get any more than single phase anyhow, that puts that to rest.
So we're talking about multifamily and independent living, the elderly when we're talking about residential and level three. Not single family. Ballons with a garage.
In terms of the required?
In in terms of the permitted.
Yeah, so it would um it would be permitted in multifamily and for independent living.
Right. But we're still going to check with them.
Yeah, yeah, definitely check with them.
And building.
Okay, Patrick, could you also um make sure the minutes topped, the allocate in?
I'm McCoslin, twenty eleven months, and um just came back from California. He opened up one of the biggest charging stations in the world. Hundred chargers, traffic flow is is one of the reasons. We're going to adopt this technology. Government wants to limit it somehow, need bigger charging stations. That could can supply, like my brother just explained. A level of charge that I think people will need, I just seen somebody plug their phone in over here. You know, what's he going to do when he hears a mini plug his car in, I mean, it sounds crazy, but that's the way of life out on West Coast. And uh as far as recharging or say a battery's dead or anything, they bring you a charger. Battery with a charger, plug it in and twenty minutes, got enough to get to a a level three charger. So it's uh it's something we got to think about, not just, I I guess at every at at every place where it works. But. It's got to be the place that's got the traffic flow. Off the interstate. Or road, I know you're not going to want to hear it, because it probably would impede traffic, but you have to have a lot of property.
Thank you.
Pick up at um signs and this one we have a presentation, if I can get it. Okay, so for signs, we we have a PowerPoint presentation to try to summarize as best we can and um. We're looking at a comprehensive update to the sign ordinance for a number of reasons and one of the major reasons is. The change changes in federal case law related to content related standards for signs. And there have been federal cases in recent years that have required all local units of government to have to evaluate their sign standards for. Where they regulate content and um make sure that they're meeting federal law um in amending the ordinance. But at the same time, I think the last comprehensive review of the ordinance was maybe seventeen or eighteen years ago, so there have been a lot of changes and. As staff in the planning division, we've seen a lot of requests and comments from people that we've met with. Either current business owners or prospective business owners during the pre-development meetings through the development process, so. In the number of things that we're looking at in terms of having to amend the sign standards to comply with federal case law. To update based on technology and to really look through all the standards and see if there's any items that we need to address that come out of the ordinance enforcement division. Or the building division and try to do a large comprehensive update of the sign standards, so. Um the planning commission reviewed a partial draft of the proposed sign standards on October sixteenth at a work session. Um and since that time, we've um continued to work through the draft, compiled a lot of changes based on um some items that we've had over the years. In terms of best practices, trying to address um issues that we've heard of both in the community and from building division and ordinance enforcement. And so updating the draft, the draft ordinance itself is forty eight pages, so I'll spare you going page by page through that. It's a it's a fairly complex ordinance as it's currently written and what we've tried to do in the update is to do our best to simplify it. Both for the user um and for whether that's someone who's getting a permit or someone who's administering the code. Um so I'll just start through the presentation of regulating the signs, so um I'll start with, there was a federal Supreme Court case. Act of twenty fifteen of Reed versus Town of Gilroy, which was a town in Arizona, and um what was that issue was that the town had regulated. Different types of signs based on the content, it would have different rules for political signs and real estate signs and temporary event signs. And so the plaintiff in this case was religious land use that had temporary signs advertising church services. And so um when it got to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court ruled unanimously on it and struck down that part of their sign ordinance. And uh basically saying that there can be um standards in a in an ordinance that regulate um different signs based on the content of the speech. There are some nuances in that since then in federal case law, but that was the crux of of this case. And the court said that um government regulation of speeches, content based of a law applies to particular speech because of the topic discussed. Or the idea or message conveyed, so as we'll see in this presentation, there are some sections in in sign ordinance that do have the content based standards for signs. And before and during this case, the vast majority of communities have the same condition in their sign ordinances. So really, the bottom line of that was to regulate the time, the place and the manner of signage. Um in looking at where to put a sign ordinance, the sign ordinance is currently located in the zoning ordinance. And some communities decide whether to put them in the zoning ordinance or in their general law ordinance. If for something that's in a general law ordinance or a police power ordinance, um it's an additional ordinance to have to find and use outside the zoning. So if someone's looking for the sign standards, their first instinct is to go directly to the zoning ordinance because it regulates land use. In a general ordinance, not everyone knows where to look for it, um sometimes it allows for non-conforming signs to be removed in some cases. Some entities are not subject to the zoning ordinance, but are subject to the general law ordinance. Our current zoning ordinance in Canton, uh many years ago, used to be put in the general law ordinance and several years ago, it was moved over to the zoning ordinance. Which is a much better ordinance to regulate under because it allows for non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. And it ties the uh sign to a site and land use and the same criteria that we use to review land uses and development. A lot of those same criteria apply to signs in terms of setback, design, lighting, things like that. So the signs are currently in the zoning ordinance, we're proposing to keep them in the zoning ordinance. Um zoning ordinance is kind of a one stop shop for anything land use related for ordinances. There are some land use related ordinances that are in our general ordinances, but we we work continuously to monitor to see where the appropriate places are. But for the signs, we regulate that or we recommend that they be regulated in the zoning ordinance. And then it's easier to work with, it's easier to issue permits, it allows non-conforming signs to continue. Some entities um are not subject to the zoning ordinance, like um public schools. Public schools under the jurisdiction of the state superintendent are not subject to local zoning, so their permits go through the state. And uh if you may notice, some of our public schools in Canton, they have electronic message center signs, LED signs that that scroll, that flash. Uh those signs are not permitted in the zoning ordinance, but because they're on the property of a public school, they're under the jurisdiction of the state superintendent. They're not subject to our zoning ordinance, so we can't regulate signs through the zoning ordinance on public school property. Or for that matter, public charter academies that are also under the jurisdiction of the state superintendent. We're not going to show you a lot of redlining um in the ordinance, but one key definition is the definition of a sign itself. And many communities define a sign different and the way that we're proposing in this draft is that. Um a sign is something that's intended to identify or display information or to attract attention um from offsite. Or from a public or private street, so what we want to start with is regulating those things that are viewable, legible from an adjacent property from a street. Because a lot of things internal to a property are just not even close to being visible offsite. And those are things that we don't want to regulate that much more, we want to minimally regulate and focus more on those things that people see from the public right away and adjacent properties. Uh so we have some exemptions there, including exemptions in state law, so for example, um there are state laws that regulate no trespassing signs. There are state laws that regulate commemorative signs, there's an international fire code that requires address identification. So there are these laws outside of the zoning ordinance that regulate signs that we'll reference, but we won't really regulate. Uh for the article organization.
Sorry, Patrick?
A a commemorative commemorative sign, what is that?
Um some could be something like a historic marker.
Oh, okay. I was thinking how you would drive along a freeway or something and then there'll be a sign where it looks like somebody was killed.
Like a ghost outside memorials.
Right, where do those fit?
Um I don't think they're covered in state law, but um they they probably also don't function as signs if there's. I've seen them before where it's a ghost bike and maybe some flowers or a memorial, um it may be. You know, if if it's something where it's it becomes a blight or some kind of nuisance, it might be covered in another ordinance, but it's not really used to communicate information. So we wouldn't want to regulate it as a sign.
Okay, thank you.
Before getting into the article organization, um on eleven by seventeen paper in front of you, there's just a rundown of. The current sign article organization and the proposed article article organization and um. It it's a lot of information and it's difficult to kind of go back and forth, but it's more just to illustrate some of the, as complex as the proposed organization is. It's designed to be much more simple than our current organization, which is a little bit disjointed and what we're trying to achieve. Among other things is to minimize the number of flipping back and forth through pages, having to scroll through different parts of the ordinance. So one of the items that I want to call out on this list is um it's in the bottom half where it says specific sign standards. Um it's reorganized by sign type, so in currently the sign ordinance has it by district, so if someone wants to know how to regulate ground signs. They're flipping between commercial districts, industrial districts and residential districts. The proposed draft regulates them by type, so if somebody wants to know what the regulations are for a ground sign, they go for the sta- they go to the page where ground signs are regulated. And all the districts are there, so depending on what sign type you're looking for, you go to that type section and you find all the district standards. As well as the development standards for those types of signs. So a lot of these are just um organization types of items. Currently in the sign ordinance, the intent and purpose statement is one sentence and we have several intent and purpose statements. In the ordinance, they take up a lot of space and it's not because we want to put in any more information than we have to, but um sign ordinances and sign standards. Are subject to a lot of legal scrutiny and um there are a lot of lawsuits filed over sign ordinances. So when we're when we we're having to defend our sign ordinance, we want to start with the basics. And start with the foundational elements of why we have sign regulations, why it's important to regulate signs. And so these are a list of things that we have in the ordinance and we have sentences and in some pieces paragraphs dedicated to. Um describing the intent and purpose of why we regulate signs and really nowhere in there is it about regulating content. It's about a lot of these other elements of community character and safety and wayfinding that we want to we want to regulate and provide for. Uh for the authority, this just um confirms the current practices that are codified in terms of the township's right to have the ordinance administer the ordinance. As well as to issue permits to its divisions and departments. So we have a a list here on the left of what's being taken out of the ordinance and to the right are things that are being put in to the ordinance for for new items. So on the left, some of the things that we want to note are, for example, political signs. The ordinance goes into some detail in terms of defining what a political sign and it gets into content and the times when they can be put out. And so because that's a content based standard, um that's something that's proposed to be taken out and on the right column, what's in, we have um a yard sign. And so we will propose regulations for yard signs based on um the dimensions, the placement, the setback of yard signs. And not dealing with the content that's on the sign itself. On the left hand column, we've got some of the items with asterisks where we want to address. We don't really address it in the ordinance right now, but we want to address it through the process where in some cases, um gas station pump islands or menu order signs. Those are signs that are related to a use, but they're. Those are signs that are related to a use, but they're related only to a specific type of use. No other uses other than fast food restaurants have a menu order sign. No other use besides gas pumps have pump island signage or their canopy signage the way that they do. So those are things that we'll address throughout the process in terms of if it wades into either content-based or a regulation based on the land use or the speaker, we'll tread carefully there to see what we're able to do through the people or view of the ordinance. And then the other items that are in are more related to the type of sign it is in terms of material, method of attachment, how it's displayed, and not so much of the content of the message that's on the sign. And then we have more items that are out. One thing that the ordinance enforcement division deals with a lot are string lights. When there's a string lights displayed around a window or a sign itself to illuminate a sign, those are things that ordinance enforces. And those are things that we probably want to address in the light standards of the ordinance, not necessarily the sign standards because of how string lights can be displayed. They can be displayed architecturally, they can be displayed as a decoration. Sometimes they're displayed to mimic a sign, but because of the versatility of where lights can be put, we regulate, or we recommend regulating those in the light standards. So that's something we recommend. And then we have a longer list of signs that are put in there. So this slide's dedicated to some of the major changes that we'll see with the sign ordinance. In the ordinance itself, there are major changes, but out in the community, once a new ordinance is adopted, we may not notice any changes because a lot of the regulations are the same outcome, but different ways of getting there. But what we're proposing summarized on this slide are some significant changes. So the first major change, we've already talked about grouping the signs by type. And the first major one would be ground signs in commercial districts. Currently, in commercial districts, the max square footage is 24. And that allows basically a six-foot wide by four-foot-high sign. And that's, the max height is six feet. So what we'd be looking at there most times is a two-foot-high masonry base. And then up from the two feet, there's a four-foot-high sign for a total height of six feet. And then if that sign has a width of six feet, then a four-by-six sign is 24 square feet. We recommend raising that to 32 square feet, but not increasing the height. So if there's additional signage that's placed, that additional area would be horizontal, not vertical. So we would not be seeing higher signs based on that. One of the reasons we recommend raising it, some communities go even larger than 32 square feet. One of the reasons we recommend raising it, we hear a lot of comments from the business community asking about larger signs, and they've asked about applying for variances. And we've usually discouraged variances because the standards of review for variance are very high. Where a business that just wants more signage for better visibility, they wouldn't meet the variance standards of review. So we don't recommend that businesses apply for a square footage variance for a sign unless they could meet those high thresholds. We also have standards in the ordinance for the minimum size of text. So the minimum size of text on a sign, I think it's 10 inches for the main characters and then five inches for some of the smaller characters. And the reason we have those minimum standards for the text is that if people are driving down the road, we want a minimum size for text so that's legible. Some businesses that have long names or have more information, sometimes they ask for just a little bit more square footage, and if they can't get it, they minimize the content on their sign. And in some cases, it's less legible because the information they're trying to display, they just can't. Another recommendation we have is to reduce the setback from the right-of-way from 10 feet to five feet. Currently, monument signs have to be 10 feet from a road right-of-way. But ironically, those large multi-tenant signs that you see on Ford Road with the white backgrounds that are really high, the minimum setback for those signs is three feet from the right-of-way. Which I'm not sure why there's a distinction between 10 feet for a single-user monument sign that's smaller, but three feet for a larger sign. So we recommend going a little bit closer to the right-of-way, five feet. At the same time, we have in a separate section of the ordinance clear vision triangles at the intersections in roads and driveways. So those would still be maintained. So those lines of sight in those critical clear vision triangles, they may still be maintained. Some ordinances in other communities, they allow signs to go right up to the right-of-way. Others go a few feet back. In looking at going five feet in addition to the 32 square feet, we think there would be much better visibility from the road for signs, much better display of information. So if there are drivers looking for businesses, they might be able to make faster reaction times in the road by having that information there. For some of our multi-tenant signs, in the C1 Village Shopping District, if it's a multi-tenant sign, the ordinance allows those to be 30 square feet. We allow, or we recommend increasing that to 42 square feet. And in the C2, C3, and C4 districts, the max sign area for multi-tenant signs is 42 square feet. We recommend raising that to 48 square feet. So relatively minor changes as new signs, if this is adopted and new signs go in, we'll notice they're a little bit bigger, but they're not going to be higher. They might be a little closer to the road if it's 10 feet instead of five, but it won't be anything that, I think it'll be a little bit of a difference at first because it's something we don't have too many of. But I think over time, as businesses and multi-tenant centers get accustomed to new regulations, they'll want to update their signs. And this will be a good opportunity for hopefully some of those non-conforming signs to be lost by incentivizing larger signs that will have a better effect than what the current signs are. And then the last major change is with temporary yard signs. Right now, we recommend individual signs not exceeding six square feet with a maximum of 24 square feet total. This is more of just a starting point. There are certain times during the year when people will have more yard signage. If their kids are in different activities, or it's election season, or any other reason people have more yard signs. Most of the time, they just come and go as, whether it's election season, or it's the end of the sports season, or if the sign is ready to be thrown out because it's rusted and faded. Usually, it's not anything that's a huge concern, but nevertheless, standards should be in the ordinance so that there's a limit on the number, the square footage, and the duration of when temporary yard signs can be placed. We have in the draft ordinance an exception of, two exceptions for yard signs. One is while a property is for sale or for lease, where there's some additional signage allowed. And the other is during certain dates before and after an election. I know standards like that have been challenged before, but it's something that we at least want to have in the draft and talk in more detail with our legal counsel to see if there's something that we can do, whether it's around an event or whether it's just a blanket 60 days in a calendar year, somebody can have more signage for whichever reason they choose. Just so that it allows people to display some of those messages, especially those First Amendment-related messages that are typical, but then prevent the year-round signage that we want to prohibit to maintain community character. So this is written right now as kind of a starter. I think it'll evolve as we have our legal counsel review our draft and as we go through it with the planning commission and we get additional comments through the review process.
Super quick, through the chair to Patrick. Real quick, if you could help me with a, I don't know, a cursory definition of content neutral. I don't know, legal counsel wants to address it as well.
Can you repeat that?
The, just a definition of content neutral and how it encompasses the signage.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, it should be on.
I'm so used to watching you guys push the button. I don't know if I can provide you with a,
You have to get close to it.
I don't know if I could provide you with a perfect definition right now, but I can put one together based off of what the case law says, and I can provide it to Patrick and present it at the next meeting.
That's cool.
To give you a full definition, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth because it is kind of complex. It's been battled, I think, pretty extensively in the courts, so.
Yeah, in some ordinances, they may define political signs as it must include a candidate or something on their ballot where you have to read the sign and know that it's part of that ballot on the election, and it's very specific in terms of what it has to include, that's definitely related to the content. Others, other ordinances are more subtle where they don't regulate what you put on the sign, but it states that it's a certain number of weeks before and after an election when you can have the sign. So it kind of implies what the content will be without going and saying it. And then what we won't touch on here, but has been subject to a lot of federal litigation, is content related to non-commercial content and commercial content, especially off-premises commercial content, where something's being advertised, but it's not on the site which, where the sign is located. So very, very complex. We have some signs that don't have any standards in any of the zoning districts or the following list of signs. So those are things that we'll kind of go through as we continue through the ordinance itself. One thing that we want to call out is we currently don't have standards for electronic message center signs. And those are LED, changeable signs. Those are signs that we don't allow in the community right now. And many communities don't allow them, and Canton's one of those communities. So we haven't included any standards in the ordinance now to recommend allowing them, but it is a type of sign that's out there that if there's any, if there's any desire for more information or to explore any regulations, we can go back and start to look through that.
You mean like the one out in front of this building, right?
We have a section of the ordinance that states that the township is allowed to exempt itself from some of the standards in the zoning ordinance. So if a township, the building is in a setback, or a township doesn't have, township structure is higher, the township can't exempt itself from the zoning ordinance. And I think the premise there is that in serving the public, the township may find that the zoning ordinance prohibits it from providing public services, so it can exempt itself. Now, how it relates to signs in this new world that we're living in, I'm not sure how that applies.
Well, and it is convenient that the police are right there, so if you rear-end somebody because you're reading the sign, it's easy.
I'll defer to a lawyer on that one.
Okay.
And then another one is wall signs facing I-275. Most of the buildings that face I-275 are industrial buildings. Some of them have wall signage facing I-275 just advertising their business name. But we don't quite address that. So that's something where if it's a wall sign facing 275, we may want to include additional provisions for wall signage.
Question, is there a difference between a flag and a flag sign? What's a flag sign?
I think it's intended to mean the same.
Okay. So we don't have any standards on size or height or anything on?
On flags, I'll have to look through the ordinance to see what we say on flags. A lot of ordinances state that flags are exempt if they display, if it's a national flag or a state flag or Michigan, you know, state of Michigan, not MSU. Although, you know, it's a non-commercial in nature, but they are very specific in terms of the US flag. And technically, that is content-based, so that's something where we'll have to look at and make distinctions in terms of, we can't say just accepting the American flag or some national flag, then, you know, thinking about how many flags you're able to display, how long you can display them, things like that.
And do they have to follow the flag code?
Flag code?
The US flag code.
We can reference that.
I don't know that it's ever enforced.
Oh, that makes, that makes sense.
Aren't those festoons?
Yeah, yeah.
Those are feathers.
Those are feathers.
Oh, feather flags.
I know that because I just also looked up festoon.
Yeah, what is a festoon?
We don't do so.
Festoons are two different things. There are also these things. It was quite the term we came up with. It was very little attention on festoon signs.
So yeah, festoons, feather banner signs, those are recommended to be prohibited.
What about those?
That's what I was thinking about.
I don't know what those are.
Air-activated signs.
Air-activated guys. Awesome. I knew there was a technical term.
How do we feel about those?
Well, currently, they're prohibited in the ordinance, and they're proposed to be prohibited.
I've seen them somewhere.
They might be out there.
When Canton Center was under construction.
That's where I saw it, yeah.
Hence, we relax this ordinance.
Yeah, I believe they were allowing those during construction. And during COVID too, I believe, too, when it allowed folks to know business as well.
So yeah, during those periods where there was additional signage based on, you know, either COVID or construction or some event, there's been some additional allowances there. And then the ordinance also accepts holiday decorations, which can mean a lot of different things. I think now that Halloween season is over, I've seen at least one skeleton I know of is dressed as Santa Claus as a Christmas decoration.
Was it a sign, a skeleton?
A decoration. But it's, there's air-activated signs that are out there that are holiday decorations, mostly in residential yards.
Oh, yeah. Right around the corner from my house.
I have a question, and I don't know if this is something that we need to think about or not, but I'm going to bring it up just in case. What about murals?
Murals.
That's almost like a wall building site.
No, but we've talked about it for Chirnhill Village, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm going to make sure we can ham them.
I don't think we address murals in the code. Codes I've seen before that address murals have gotten into calling it a painted wall sign and then just allowing a certain square footage. So if somebody wants to, they have a brick building that they're otherwise able to paint, and they paint out a certain area of it. I'll have to see what codes say about content, whether if it's just non-commercial and an art piece. That's one thing. If they're advertising a product, then it becomes a commercial type of sign.
Right. That's why I brought it up, because I've seen, you know, ones that have beautiful art on them, but also are advertising something.
Yeah, we'll look into that one. For non-conforming signs, we're proposing to keep a lot of the same requirements. So in cases where non-conforming signs are damaged, destroyed, depending on the amount of them, then they'll either have to be replaced to comply with the ordinance, or they'll have to be repaired according to the ordinance. And then we have a provision for replacing a vacant sign with a blank face or a cover if a unit's been vacant for 45 days. So if there's, those have been defined as abandoned signs. So if a business leaves and the sign goes into disrepair, they have to cover the face of the sign within 45 days. So that's a summary of the ordinance itself. Before getting into any additional comments, questions, our next steps will be, in addition to receiving comments from planning commissioners and township board members either tonight or after the meeting. So if you look through the ordinance again, or you have any follow-ups you want us to look at, by all means, send those along. We're also having our sign official and Building and Inspection Services Division review. Our ordinance officers are going to be reviewing it, and then we'll have the draft go to township legal counsel for review. So sometimes as planners, we like to write the ordinances and put in there, you know, what our intent is and try to get the design and everything right. But then, once we have that, we have general agreement on that, then when it goes to the attorneys, they look at the federal cases, they look at the laws, and they decide, you know, whether what we're putting in there meets legal scrutiny, and if not, options for changing the ordinance to make it so.
So Patrick, you were talking earlier about case law that if it's So Patrick, um, you, you were talking earlier about case law that if it's, uh, free speech content, it's unregulated, is that really, can you explain that again?
Sure, um, it can, a, a sign itself, it can be regulated based on, um, time, place and manner standards. So if it's a yard sign, it can be regulated based on, uh, ordinance can say how long you can have a yard sign out, um, making sure that it's maintained, so it's not rusted or faded. Um, you can regulate setbacks, uh, number of days per year, placement on the property, the number of yard signs, square footage, like, things like that. But in terms of what's printed on that yard sign, um, it's, um, with, uh, with the federal case law, what was the Reed versus Gilbert case is, um, it, it related to, um, religious speech on a sign, which is, um, covered by the First Amendment. And they had, the town of Gilbert had different standards for signs with, with temporary events, in this case, a religious event, and signs regulating political speech and elections, which was also First Amendment speech. And it was, uh, they were both non-commercial types of speech. So, um, the, the court looked at that as the community had different standards for its signs based on the content of the sign. So if it was a religious function, it can only be out during certain times. And if it was a political event, then it could be out for longer periods of time or different periods of time. And so what the court said was that because those standards regulated the signs based on the content of their signs, that it was unlawful under the First Amendment. There, there's since been some case law on, um, commercial signs and off-premise commercial signs like billboards that have allowed communities a little bit more authority to regulate. But, um, for those types of sign regulations that, uh, regulate, um, non-commercial speech, like religious speech, political speech, um, in that case, we have to be a hundred percent content neutral.
So, uh, earlier you had adult-use signs that were out. That's a commercial-based adult-use sign, is that what that means?
Typically it would be a commercial, commercial-based, those, those types of businesses.
So the mural, you're saying it would be regulated by area restrictions? That kind of defeats the mural essence, you know? It's not meant to be this little thing, you know, it's meant to be a wall. And then it can be construed as art with their business name? I mean, it, something to think about, you know, the murals, is that clearly defined?
Yeah, and, um, what we'd want to look at, uh, first with, with murals is if there's, um, certain zoning districts where we would want murals. So, um, if it was either Cherry Hill Village or certain commercial districts, or if we wanted to prohibit it in certain districts, maybe if, if we wanted to prohibit it in residential districts or, you know, other, other zoning districts. And then, starting with that, we could look at if we want to limit square footage or, um, a limited number or a limited number of sides of the building that gets put on. And then, um, depending on how far we can go with it, whether to regulate, um, content of commercial content versus non-commercial content. One other area of the ordinance, and it's generally one line, it's called a substitution clause. And basically what it states is that for any sign under the ordinance that's regulated, it can include non-commercial speech. And that comes out of a, a federal court case from several decades ago where there were distinctions between, um, commercial billboards and commercial signs and non-commercial signs. And that particular ordinance in that case, it allowed commercial signs in some areas, but it didn't allow non-commercial signs. So it favored commercial speech over non-commercial speech. So ever since then, every community's had to have provisions in the ordinance, that's called the substitution clause, where if you have a sign with commercial content or any sign, you're allowed to display non-commercial content just so that you're not favoring any commercial speech over non-commercial speech. So if it gets into commercial, non-commercial, and that clause will allow us to look at it and say, well, you know, if it's a mural, it might be geared toward commercial businesses, but you can put non-commercial content on it like art.
With a mural, with a mural, don't you have to be careful? I mean, if there's no business name in it, don't you gotta, gotta be careful of getting into the whole free speech realm? I mean, arguably it's a creative, you know, art, whatever, somebody might just be able, trying to convey a message through their art, whatever. And I think there's a whole different set of considerations we gotta get into with your own.
I have a couple, couple of questions. Um, some examples, and I just want to understand how they play out under the new ordinance. Um, first of all, for, um, temporary signs, um, like political signs, um, is there still something about having them in the public right-of-way? And like, for instance, between the sidewalk and the road, um, like on Ford Road or some road like that?
Yeah, um, one of the areas, um, in the sign ordinance where we want to prohibit, we want to prohibit signs in the right-of-way, unless they're traffic control signs. Um, I think the only dispute that we might get into is that if it's a political sign in a right-of-way and our ordinance says it's not allowed in the right-of-way, but if it's a county right-of-way, it might be a, a matter of jurisdiction of whether the county enforces it or if they allow the township to enforce it.
Okay. So it doesn't, it, it's not changing pretty much what it already is or has been in the past?
Yeah, I don't think so, because I don't think we allow signs in the right-of-way currently.
What about, um, handheld signs? Like going out of business signs on a street corner? I mean, sometimes, um, those people holding those can get quite aggressive or get close to the road. And, um, do we have anything about that in here?
We, we don't have anything in the ordinance currently on, um, I've seen them defined as people signs. And, um, it's, the definitions I've seen where it's not just someone who's wearing a T-shirt or doing something, it's someone who is holding a sign or.
Or wearing it.
Yeah, like during tax season, we all hold Statue of Liberty signs. So, um, I don't know if they've, if they've been challenged in court, but I know that communities have regulated people signs in terms of, um, where they can stand, um, not interfering with traffic, if they're, if they're holding message boards to regulate them under, you know, a square footage or something like that. So it doesn't become a vehicle distraction, because one of the intensive purposes of the ordinance is public safety and traffic safety. So if it's something that we thought would be a traffic safety issue, we would want to try to regulate it so that it wasn't.
Okay, and then lastly, um, you talked about, like, not content, but if it's for a specific timeframe, like the timeframe surrounding an election for, um, yard signs, things like that. How do you differentiate if you're going to keep from going with content? Things like signs that are not political in nature in people's yards? You know, something about your child's athletic team or something like that. Is, are, are we able to differentiate those things?
Um, in terms of the, the message, probably not, because if it's, uh, the kids' athletic teams or, um, it's a political sign or, um, like a charitable solicitation, like the SJ5K, for example. Um, those are, they're non-commercial in nature and, um, you know, it's not advertising a business. Like somebody has a home occupation and they put a yard sign. Or maybe even those temporary signs where someone's having their roof replaced for a week, you might see the contractor sign out in the yard, but you don't see it again. Um, so on those, um, some of those lower-level ones, we'd want to have something where any time in the year, you could just have a minimum number of signage so that it's, you know, a certain number of signs or square footage. But at certain times of the year where it may peak, like, um, like during an election or other things during the year where it may be event-based, where there just happens to be a desire for more signs in the yard. One of the items in the draft is, uh, that we're, we'll try to see if it, it works is a certain number of days before and after an election. If something like that is looked at as, um, you know, we, if, if legal counsel looks at it and says, well, the courts are saying, you're implying that it's election-related speech, so you better not do that. Our secondary option would be, okay, then we could say, you know, 60, 90 days in a calendar year, you can have more signage. And then, you know, if it's election signage, it kind of takes care of itself. But if you have a person in their yard who's got tons of signage year-round, then ordinance enforcement will know.
They can only do it for 60 or 90 days, no matter what it is, you know? And then they have to go back to a, a, a smaller amount. Okay, I understand, thank you.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment that, um, I like the thought that we put into this to conform with the First Amendment and to be something that I think would work for our community. But I do want to note that a lot of our HOAs do prohibit signs within the HOA, and I don't see how that's acceptable to the First Amendment.
I've heard that as well, in terms of some HOAs having content-based restrictions and, um, some other more savvy members advising them that they can't do that by law. So, um, if there's a, there's a dispute between, uh, the owner and their HOA and that's a civil matter and it keeps the township out of it, the better.
I think it's the boilerplate, because I was on homeowners board and everybody gets it. Boilerplate developers put out, and it has the same thing in it.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, um, I just want a little more clarification around the yard signs. And do you mind looking at the draft ordinance?
Are those going to be the signs not required in the permit?
Well, I'm looking at page 36 and 37. I don't know what section it's in, in ICFP. I don't know what's above that. Okay, yes. So, in the little chart there, um, and then scrolling down, there's that section two that says additional yard signs that specifically calls out elections. But would yard signs cover political signs or, I mean, that aren't necessarily about an election?
Um, they would, so if it's based on, um, uh, a topic and not an election, it's just, uh, you know, one of those First Amendment political topics, one way or another. So, um, it would be, um, not just, um, content neutral in terms of an election or whether it's, um, some political issue or whether it's a religious speech or religious issue. Um, and then it's, it would be viewpoint neutral as well.
Okay, so political speech is okay, but then election speech is going to be up for a certain period of time?
Yeah, that's the, uh, that's the, the part where, um, where it's highlighted because we want to try to call that out to see under what circumstances, um, if there's any event-related times when additional signage can be put out. So, um, one of them is, uh, the sale or lease of property and then the other is during an election where, um, it doesn't, um, it doesn't say what the sign has to include on it. So, um, if it's an election, it doesn't have to have election speech. But the implication is that during that time period, people tend to have more signs. And some of them are not even election-related, some of them are just positions.
Right.
But if, uh, if it turns out that there's, there's federal case law going against having such a specified time period, then we might step back and look at maybe just a number of days per year without saying what times of the year it is based on an event.
And then, um, is there anything about how long? Well, like the addition. I see the elections, you have 30 days before and seven days following. We might have to think about that. But also for for a house that has sold already, is there a time period that the sold sign can be up or is that, do we need, maybe something we don't even need to worry?
If it is, um, some of the standards I've seen in other ordinances are, um, it has to be removed when it closes or when, um, when the, uh, property transfer affidavit is filed. So when it becomes public record that it's changed ownership, the sign goes away.
Why you just turned yourself off?
No, it keeps turning itself off. What about, uh, one of the concerns, uh, and this is reflective of my, my profession, but one of the concerns that, um, the contractors have is they want to put a sign up in front of property and right now there's one in my yard, but, um, that just, you know, it, it's not only an advertisement for the contractor, but it also gives their phone number, so if there's an issue, that's their claim is, you know, if there's an issue. There might be an architect sign in my front yard too, but don't tell anyone. But if there is an issue during construction, they know who to call. You know, the neighbors would know who to contact. There's a truck blocking their driveway or mud in the street or something like that.
Yeah, and I, I've seen, um, when we look at the additional yard signs and those highlighted exceptions, I've seen ordinances where there's additional signage when there's an active building permit on a property. So the implication is, you know, the contractor, or it could be more than one contractor, it could be a roofer, it could be the architect. And there's a, there is a purpose to that, so like you said, if there is an issue, they know who to call.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were legal.
Questions or comments? Thank you.
Good job, Patrick.
Yeah. Very, very good job.
Put a lot of work into this. Quite a lot. Appreciate it all.
And Zach Michelle's our associate planner has been put in a lot of hours. He's gotten this over the finish line over the last few weeks. We've been talking about this for months and months, but, uh, he, he brought it home with his draft, so. Yay, Zach.
Very good. Thank you. All right, and do we have any public comments? Public comments? Any public comments? Any board comments? And I have a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Patrick.